Because if we weren't.
We will call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And Chief, would you actually, since you're going to be, well, you're first up. Kirk, can, just so we can have rotation, well, Kirk or Kath, because we're at 10, we're at actually 11. So Kath, could you sit out in the hall? That way we're meeting our standards. And then I'll call you in once we take care of the fire business, so we can conduct that. Yes, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Polley.
Present.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich, here. Treasurer Ellery Summers, here. Trustee Kroll.
Here.
Trustee Dunkel.
Excused absence, I do believe.
Oh, I thought he was calling in.
Oh, is he calling in?
That's what his email said.
Okay, so we'll wait to see on that.
And then Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Okay, at this point in time, this is the point of adoption of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added, corrected, or removed from the agenda as presented?
The idea of, well, I know I'm only on the agenda for two items, so there's three or four other ones I would like the board to be aware of, not necessarily have to deal with today, just forward to the next meeting.
By all means, let's address it now.
Update on the contract for the purchase of the new engine. The RFPs were already on the agenda, I believe. I'd like to add, to look at the proposals for this to replace some automatic leaders in the near future. I added in the papers. And I also would like permission to get bits to move, relocate the heater in the apparatus base. Going along with the new engine purchase. I'm 98% sure that the configuration of the new engine is going to be dangerously close to not approaching a power heater on right now.
Okay, so is that it, sir?
That's it.
Okay, so I would make the recommendation, under Old Business, we add a New B, update to Engine, and shuffle down Old Business B to create Old Business C, which will be the Code Official Conference in Michigan. As formerly mentioned, the pagers are on under New Business, of which we will have discussion and move forward at that point in time. And then I'd also recommend for the defibrillators and the heater, that you supply those, both of those topics well in advance for this board at the subsequent meeting. Are there any other additions, corrections to the amended?
So all work.
The only thing would be New Business B and sliding B down to C.
Okay.
For this agenda.
So those would be on next agenda the other day.
Correct.
Okay.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same? Agenda adopted. This is a first opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody participating by phone, please state your name for the record. Hearing none. We do have one attendee. Mr. Davis, would you like to acknowledge the board?
Sure. Just gonna tune in as long as I can, but the schedule's a bit tight at the station today. So like I said, I'd love to give someone a call, and I noticed the e-phone number that was provided in the chat, so I'll give that a call later this afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much.
What station is it?
WBKB. Is there any other public comment? Seeing or hearing none. We'll move forward to payment of the bills. I do believe that the bills have made their way around the table. Is there a motion to make payment of the bills? We have a motion to make payment of bills, is there support? It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? No, there's Dunkel. Good to have you with us, Trustee Dunkel. We are at the payment of bills.
Okay, thanks, yeah, sorry about that. I tried to get out and I called in on the telephone line there, but you can't hear me.
Okay, do apologize for that, but we can hear you loud and clear now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks so much.
Sorry, I lost my. Any further discussion on payment of bills? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of August 24, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? We have a motion to approve the minutes of August 24, 2020, is there support? It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Trustee Dunkel?
Aye.
Thank you. Oppose the same. Motion passed. Into correspondence. Three from FERC and two from the Rogue Commission. I would entertain a motion to receive and file the correspondence as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to receive and file, is there support? It's been supported by Kroll. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving and filing correspondence as presented signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same. Correspondence filed. Old Business, RFP for tanker converting, new tanker. Chief, would you like to address the board?
If you are to keep going with the facts, I may hopefully what would be recommended is the last thing to be RFPs. We have wrote one for a community, so if you guys have any other concerns or additions or corrections that I could give before I publish those.
I noticed on, so we are seeking to remount the existing 2,000 gallon stainless steel tank. And on item number 22, it says new 2,100 gallons, but I thought it was 2,000.
Yeah, no, that was a tape out of my heart, thank you for.
Do you have two parts, Trustee Lappin?
Yes. And then under number 40, clean out of the department redundancy department. I think they could probably say that a 10-year tank warrant, instead of a 10-year warranty tank warrant. And is there a reason why, so anyway, 2,000 gallons, 2,100?
Actually, I didn't have to worry with semantics, but the tank, as it says, is stamped as a 2,000 gallon tanker. And being an amateur student of geometry, I've tried plugging the numbers into several different old tanks, but in the best I can come up with is a 1700.
So, so I guess what I'm wondering, is it at most is dust and the factory is correct, 2,000 gallons. So the number 22 should represent a 2,000 gallon tank? Because I'm wondering if a 2,100 gallon tank, all of a sudden becomes a custom tank, rations.
Right, 2,000, 2,000 gallons. So, yeah, that was a typo, my heart, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Trustee Lappin, Trustee Polley.
On the new mount. It says we are seeking to remount our 2,000 gallon stainless steel tender on new chassis. What kind of chassis? Like our old one, or we have specifics on that, or am I just not reading something?
No, that is, one of the options is taking our existing tank and it would be up to the contract, it could be 4,000 dollars, whatever. Whatever they have available, works to get information on what it would cost to put a new chassis under our old tank. And that's why there isn't, but again, not to be too redundant, because I think I've mentioned this before, but these these aren't RFPs so much as a notice of request. A true RFP would take a true, probably be a minimum of like 80 pages, where I would call out specifically what type of channeling I want for the chassis, what type of suspension, what type of drive tray, et cetera, et cetera. What we're doing, these are letting the manufacturers or contractors come back with suggestions on what they have. So that's what the two, the two remounts, the first one would be to put our tanker tank on the existing tray liner. The second option would be to put our tank specifically on a new chassis, and then the third one is for an entirely new tanker. So.
I just have a question. So why on the first two are they water tenders? And on the other one, it's a new commercial tanker. Should they all be called the same thing?
Yes, they are the same thing.
Semantics.
It's semantics.
But yeah, to that end, I mean, there are some things, I know I spoke with Laura in regards to this, I think the only thing that was mentioned at the previous meeting, let's get it on letterhead. And under background on both, correct me if I'm wrong, but do we not have six full-time firefighters? Do we not have, we have six, five including yourself? Full-time?
Seven in here.
Are we counting Ginter as an eight-hour, is that a full-time position, is that?
Well, I was counting the empty slab.
Okay.
So.
I just, I saw that and I was like, okay. Yeah, I think outside of just putting it on letterhead, and the corrections that have already been verbalized.
These are all liner corrections.
Yeah.
I thank you guys for catching up. I'll make the corrections.
And to the last, the township deserves the right, you write, the township deserves the right to reject any bid. Why don't you put, the township deserves the right to reject or accept any bid.
You see that also?
Yeah.
And then I wondered about the one, on tanker number two, there's no reference to any one, like there was on the other one. And then I guess I wanted warranty, is it unique that there'd be a 10-year peak warranty? Why wouldn't it be like a 3,500, I don't know, kind of thing on the snow training, all that stuff? Or is that just a detract?
Again, unless we specifically call it out like that, each manufacturer, if we, if I were to bring the bits for the engine back in, on just on one apparatus, you can have, and I'm not trying to exaggerate, but as many as 10 different warranties, like one for paint, one for body, one for drive tray. So.
Which led me to the next question. Will we be able to adequately decipher whatever comes through? Will there be some kind of a spreadsheet so that we can know definitively that we are getting what we want to get, and then not have to come back later on to, well, on further review, we know this X, Y, and Z.
Yes.
Are there any other comments before?
What's a chrome wheel simulator?
It's a very valid question, Trustee Lappin.
With me is common to the industry, a lot of the bricks have the steel grounds.
I wouldn't use chrome like a.
Well, what they have is a chrome, it's a simulated chrome insert that goes into the wheel well, and it's just, yeah, that's not at any point what it's just.
All right.
Were there any other questions?
I just want to go back to my original comment of calling it a wonder water tender and then a tanker, because to me, I don't know the difference, so, I mean, I just think it should be consistent, so 10 years down the road, if somebody looks, I mean, if they're not in your field, I think they should be consistent.
Fair enough.
If they really are the same thing.
That's very easy, but I can do that, thank you.
Okay, so upon the recommended changes, are there any other comments or additions to the three individual RFPs that have been brought before us today?
We'll see the final draft, I take it.
Yes, okay, yeah, I'll clean these out and put them on letterhead and shoot them off. Thanks for proof, all right.
Well, I mean, I think time is somewhat of the essence. To me, I'd rather make a motion to, with the corrections, to move, to move forward and subsequently send them out at the same time. I mean, I think we've kind of gone through all the grammatics and the, all the potential smaller errors.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, by all means.
Where are we advertising this at? These are RFPs.
Yeah, generally what I do would bulk email to the, to all of the different dealers and/or dealer manufacturers in the state. And we also have at least two different publications, such as with the positional meetings that we can that we can piggyback them onto, for like that MPFFU, which is their, our fighters, Michigan Fire Chiefs. And actually, it's correct, I'm trying to wrong, but I think there would be a place in the township publication to be able to.
On the website?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we have to run an ad now, PMA News, to refer people to our website for this?
Not, not for this. Not for this. So at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to, with said corrections, to move forward with production of the three RFPs for publication. Actually, hold on one second. To whomever's on the phone, if you would please mute yourself, we're getting some feedback. Okay, beautiful. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. So back to, is there a motion to move forward with the production and publication? We have a motion to produce and public, make public the RFPs that have been presented with the amended issues, corrections. We have a motion, is there support? It's been supported by Trustee Lappin. Any further discussion? Yeah, so once you make those corrections, get that to our clerk, and then please email all trustees. That'd be appreciated. I'd entertain a roll call on that.
Trustee Dunkel?
Trustee Dunkel, are you still on the line? Yes, we can hear you. You're kind of quiet now.
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, we can now, thank you.
Trustee Polley.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Next item of business is the update on the new engine, Chief.
Yeah, I received a call from a manufacturer representative. They said they hadn't received a signed copy of the initial contract yet, and I was just wondering if there was a faux pas on my part, or if you guys didn't need to have possession of that, or?
I did not, it was not brought to my attention first, signing.
Are you talking about the financing?
The financing, or?
No, he, a day or two after the original approval, I gave him a copy of like a two-page contract, which he pointed out there was a 60-day window on it, it's been extended, of course, but he still hasn't, so is that, I mean, what can, do you want me to re-?
That wasn't up to me to sign.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, we had a board motion to start that, but we need to, I thought that this was actually, I guess I thought that was actually addressed, but by all means, since we're going to be sitting down, get that to me so we can get that foot in the door. Yeah, because I thought this was going to be an update about the potentials of financing, so.
No, this, because his concern is toward the end of month, or October, first, there'll be a price increase.
Okay.
And we don't have that signed copy to it, so I'll.
I would just like to comment on the financing part when you had given me that copy. You know, I had sent it out to various financial institutions, and really, nobody can guarantee rates until, I mean, we're not, right, I mean, we're not going to actually be purchase-getting it, and, you know, and needing to finance it for a year. So, I mean, we kind of have ideas of where people are at and different options, but we really don't know that.
And their statement to me was, as long as we've signed that contract at that price, which we've talked about in the fire committee meetings, is don't worry about it going up or down. Basically, what that's doing is reserving a spot, making a line for manufacturing and worry about finances.
I just wanted to update.
They're not going to try to set the price in pre-sacrifice.
Chief, at the last fire committee meeting, you had a bunch of little sticky notes of things that you were going to go back and see if there were going to be additional costs to, or lower the cost of. And I don't think we've met since then, have we?
No.
So I was just.
Do you want to update on that?
Yeah.
Okay, a lot of those sticky, no, I know particularly for Supervisor Skibby, it was kind of a, I brought in a bit, there was a whole lot of sticky there where I had questions. A lot of those, well, actually, they have all been resolved through.
With no change to the cost of the?
With no change to the cost, speaking to the manufacturer. The two big items were the air primer for the pump, which is a relatively new thing on the fire apparatus, as opposed to mechanical or electric pump. That, I'll just make it long story short, that is in the spec, no extra charge. And the other thing was the driver's seat and the officer's seat. There was a question about putting the air pack cut out in the officer's seat, which again, will not be a problem. And the question was, because we talked about specifying an air right seat, which is in all of our apparatus now, what they have is a newer postroom, it's an electric seat with spring coils. And what I was told from the manufacturer, he said he drives in the cross-country delivery, he said unless you drive them for 12 hours, you're not going to notice the difference. He actually prefers the electric ones with the spring coils to the pneumatic, they're not as, they're not, I want to say they're, they're less susceptible to the shock or the sudden movement. And I talked to the officers, and they've all agreed that at 15 point, we'll go with what's spectral. So those, those issues are then resolved.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief? Seeing none. Thank you for the update. I will get with you after this meeting for the two items.
Okay.
And I think, because, and do you have, well, since you're here, you, because I, my, my plan is with New Business 3, the 800 radios, do you want to address that now, so that way we can?
I could, I wanted, I, there's, I want the board to be aware that with the advent of the EMS knowledge passing, what we've been treading over for three or four years is now going to fruition very quickly. As, just, just to bring me back up to speed, Mr. Vault had acquired a great number of 800 megahertz radios that will be distributed to us at no charge. However, we are going to have to pay for the new pagers. And with the knowledge passing, that's when, we have no idea when that will happen to, it's going to happen by the end of October. Yes, excuse me, what? And there is, I don't know if those got handed out, but there is an associated cost for even a minimum number of pagers, which is 14, which will not help the entire department, that's just like our poor people and our full-time. It's going to be somewhere around $7,000. That's why I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that would go to Supervisor Skibby and myself, time for the next meeting to sit down and try to discern where we're going to try to come up with that money or, and/or make payments. So I'll be looking at addressing that at the next meeting, but I wanted you to be aware of it. So it is a significant cost and.
Trustee Polley.
I thought there were some grants we were trying to reach on that.
For communications?
Yeah.
I've written grants for the PPE, which is P.E.R.A.T., it was the out of the budget.
But I thought somebody was writing a grant for the county for something for pagers, is this a different kind of pager?
We, I had in my past written two AFG grants for 800 megahertz, maybe we're both declined by P.
There was discussion.
Is that, is that?
Yeah, I guess, because I.
Yeah. The window for those is coming down, and we were denied both times, so.
And there's no other things we can ask for?
Yeah, and that was a county-wide grant I was seeking, not specifically for our department, it was for the entire county, so.
Any other questions for Chief at this point in time? Actually, Chief, could you find Kath? Yes, correct.
May I request a chief problems, A and B?
Actually, no, because I have a hard cap of 10 people that have to be by executive order. I mean. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Hello, Kath. Okay, so moving forward, actually, Kirk, next is Old Business, the Code Official Conference in Michigan. You made the adjustment to your budget and sent that in on October, or September the 8th, or, well, dated the September the 8th. I sent it last week or so. I'm transferring $500 from GL 101 372 860000 to Schools and Conventions 101 372 830000. I will entertain a motion to move forward with the budget amendment as presented.
So moves.
We have a motion by Trustee Dunkel, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
I would like to make a comment.
Yes.
Just anytime, I mean, just in the future for any of us, if we do plan on going to any type of conference, we have to include the whole amount of how much the class is, how much mileage is, how much room is, if there's meals, just because that is what it costs to send someone, so that's just why I'd like to comment on that.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, moving forward to the next item of business. I will address this, and Kath, if you have anything to add to this topic, by all means. I originally signed this up through the Water Assistant Participation Program, which utilizes $25 million of CARES Act money to offset the arrearses of our DPW department, at which point in time, where it was to the tune of $110,000. it was to the tune of $110,000 because of the pandemic, well, not 100% because of the pandemic, but this program-
We had to keep it that late, $110,000.
That's how much we were in arrearsages. Now, it was at a direct correlation to COVID, no, but that is what, under the guise of the initial program paperwork that was disseminated by the Department of Treasury, I looked at it as a very general, great program, this is something to afford smaller water and sewer transmission municipalities in these times, and the people in these times of need with the utilization of Senate Bill 690. Since that initial paper was transmitted, on August 25th, actually, it came through on, through an email on August 26th, all the paperwork from Department of Health and Human Services to the coordination and dispersment therein of what percentage of $25 million we would potentially be viable for, and the first set timeline was two days later to have the first deliverables of having all the arrearsages, all names, all database transferred to and set up with what is called a CAA, the Local Action Organization, which in our instance would be NEMSCA, of which they hadn't even gotten the email from the internal department. Long and short, I can probably continue on about the ins and outs of this program, the ins and outs, only people that would be applicable to have their arrearsages paid to a cap of $700 or $1,400, if you could break out sewer and water, a one-time payment of $1,400 cap, is to people that are currently in a welfare assistance program, but not just any welfare assistance program, only, I think, two or three of the state programs are viable for this potential funding mechanism. With the other contingent being, we give them a 25% discount right out the gate, and for X amount of years, there is no cost offset for any admin cost, of which, if we move forward with this program, would be for three years of accounting, and we don't know exactly how many people, although it'd be a relatively small percentage of people that are behind on their payments, that this program would actually serve. Like I said, I started diving into this because it made the most sense, because we are a board of the people for the people, except for this program, and its lackluster performance therein frightens me now with the amount of information that I've disseminated from this entire program, and a lot of the notes of which I state are in this package. At this point in time, I'd entertain a direction from this board, but yes, trustee Polley.
I'd like to see this board receiving file, we have all the information, and I don't think it pertains to our township at this point.
Well, and we have a motion on the table, but let's, do we have support for that motion?
What is the motion?
Re-stated again?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, somebody make a motion?
No, I thought you just did.
Oh, no.
To receive and file.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, but we do have, so we have a motion to receive and file, but I need a higher level of emotion, so we have a motion on the table, is there support? If we have no support, then that-
Any amendments?
You can, you're more than willing, I mean, to me, it's, are you willing to make a friendly amendment for your original motion? And by all means, if I've misstated anything, Ms. Wynn, please interject at this point in time, because I want this board to know the volumes of work that we have to do in secured a portal with our local CAA in transmission of all of our water arrears customers, which our database does not track the level of definition to their database that they need with social security, data, I mean, we don't collect that, and so, if we say yes, yes-
Can I withdraw my motion?
I would, we have a, yes, at this point, I would allow you to withdraw your motion, since we have no support on the table.
This is what I'm gathering.
Yes.
We don't have the manpower to do this program.
We don't-
The time and energy put into it, we would get very little back of it.
That would be a very short and sweet synopsis, and Kath, would you like to interject at any point in time?
Yeah, I mean, the 20 billion function does not collect, as Supervisor Skibby noted, does not collect some of the information that the state agencies will require, we don't have any idea at this time how many of the people who are arrearsages would qualify because of the script qualifications that they be involved in a food support program through the state with very limited definitions on what that would apply, also, the administrative costs and to track it, and, you know, having to provide that to the state for as, you know, sort of, in order that it be for a minimal return on investment of time, is not something that I think would be easily published by the utility bill function at this time, and I agree with Supervisor Skibby that this may not be the best course of action, it also limits some of the ways that the arrearsages need to be put in the future as well.
Yes.
Yeah, it seems furthermore that you've got to track this for three years, it's a moving target. Would my being able to-
And if, and if we, and she, Kath made a very succinct point with her last statement, is if, because we are actually afforded at this point in time a mechanism, because any arrearsages that come up, we can actually afford ourselves through our water ordinance to put said arrearsages onto the tax rule, if we opt into this, we are not afforded that.
So, we just want to reset the application, or what am I doing?
I want the board to make a vote to allow me to say, thanks, but no thanks.
How do you want that said?
Please, Kath, we need a word in better than a motion.
I would entertain a motion to reverse our application for the Water Assistance Participation Program, and to allow me to contact our point of contact with NEMSCA to do-
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and I'll work with you to clean that up. We have a motion on the table to reject the Water Assistance Program for all intent and purpose.
Okay.
Is there support?
No support.
No support there.
No, thank you both, we have support by trustee Kroll. He beat it to the punch, Matt. Any further discussion on this program? Like I said, it started out without the details, like, hey, we can actually make some of our residents' lives easier in these troubling times, to, uh-oh, what did I actually start the process, especially when the other side of the ball, as to the four hours of webinars that I sat through, and one department through the state arguing with one another of their interpretation of the program, didn't give me the greatest confidence, so, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Kroll?
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Polley?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes.
Okay, before we do move on, do you have anything else?
You will contact Mr. Krishana?
I, actually, our primary point of contact is Nicole Smith with NEMSCA, she's local, she's, I will contact everybody and all. Do you have, in terms of, I know that it was quick, but moving forward, we will be getting some reports from F and B, but since we have her here, would you like to give a quick synopsis, Kath, of your time as being our operator in charge, and?
Good morning to the board as a whole, so we assumed full operational responsibility on August 17th for the contract that I introduced, and at the last board meeting that we attended, we have done interviews with all three of these, this combination of the staff members, all three staff members were tendered an offer by F and B, two of them accepted the offer, and are now F and B operations employees, housekeeper, we have the councilor Paul, we have been, kind of a transitional period, partly spooked by COVID and making some changes, you know, as far as communication methods and electronics and phones and all that kind of stuff, in the meantime, business has continued as far as the operation of the water sewer system, I think that, you know, we've been working well with the utility building staff and with the clerk and charterer office, as well as Supervisor Skibby, we have notified that the board approved the Princeton list station project at the last board meeting, we are working with the vendor to get that in place, and hopefully move forward with that, we are also going to be going further into the list station process, Doug Nolan, who is one of our project managers, has been working for some time now, doing a condition assessment on all of those stations, both those owned by the township, as well as those that the township contracts with for homeowner associations, so we will be putting together some information in regard to that, and some recommendations for proceeding to get those out of stations up to good operational condition as well, and we are also following through on some of the other projects that have then started in the past in regard to monitoring of the stations and other things like that, so we've been communicating with the town that ran this training public center in regard to water quality, also working with the new jail site, we've got some site visits out there, as they're ramping up, you know, the construction of that site, that they hope to have completed by the end of this year, so, other than that, I don't know if there was anything in particular that anyone had questions or concerns about.
Anybody have any questions for Kath at this point in time? Otherwise, she'll become a stable figure at our 11:00 AM second Tuesday of the month, so we can, thank you very much, oh, yes, Kath.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, so, you know, the staff members that are in the office have all that kind of information, happy to answer any questions or concerns, if you have any, going forward, otherwise, I'm going to excuse myself and get back to DPW.
Okay, thank you very much. If Dave's in the hallway, I guess, would you have him come back in now that we're, next item, Mr. Melkensen. I'll just start by prefacing with the fact that this is an item on the agenda, it was an offer of open or closed to Mr. Melkensen in regards to a disciplinary meeting that we had on the 28th, of which everybody has the paperwork associated that was transmitted to Mr. Melkensen, and at this, I'll keep it as simple as that, Mr. Melkensen.
What would you like me to say?
You can stand right up front and center if you'd like.
I have a point and sense of report, and I would request that during that, that I would not be involved in this respect, and I would love to start.
Well, as long as it pertains to the matter at hand, Mr. Melkensen.
As long as it pertains to the matter at hand. I'd like to start out with the new reports, normally, I would report them a month to the county board, I don't know if it's been reported in the past, but I am continuing to report, and I would like to start out with that, I'd like to present the building department report for September 8th, 2020, the David Building Department has issued a total of 163 building permits, which is 11% increase over last year's performance, 69 residential permits, 5% increase over last year, 91 municipal permits, 17% increase, 28 building permits, an 80% increase, one fire department permit, 100% increase, from January 1st, 2020 to August 3rd, 2020, I have performed 285 building inspections, a decrease of 30% of building inspections due to COVID-19, have driven a total of 3,647 miles from January 1st, 2020 to August 3rd, a mile or decrease of 35% due to COVID-19. On Wednesday, September 2nd, a new report was requested by Supervisor Skibby, and in this package, you will see, going forward, will absolutely all units in the process, it's much easier, much more efficient, and I appreciate that for the recommendation of the supervisor. And that particular report, as you'll see, is I can face that, is dated January 1st, 2020, and concluding in 9/4, 2020, total permits, record 360 issued this year, the revenue generated was $67,307.05. Now, following down the report, every one of you can go ahead and read at your own leisure and time, that's why you present the report, I think it's a great report, the same space from everything else, I'm really sure of the length. The second report that you will find is my performance, the date of writing, April 9th, 2018, and concluding it September 4th, 2020, the total number of permits issued under the Building Department Safety Department, my approach with the team of my assistant and my two inspectors, I've issued 1,489 permits, generating a revenue of $318,009.35. It's a fantastic report. This is the first opportunity to be here in front of the board in over six months, and I appreciate the opportunity. Due to COVID, a lot of things just went wrong for us, enclosed is a copy of the Code Official Conference of Michigan, which I would never give it in that, submitted to force correctly, so there is a copy of the cover sheet, the conference application registration, and a schedule of what I intend was to attend to the class program, that is presented to the entire board, if I was not able to request, I'm just presenting it as a documentation of the plan. Thank you.
Point of clarification, Mr. Melkensen, that you were not able to present it, could you expound upon that?
I was on vacation.
Yeah.
Thank you. In this package, you were receiving is a rebuttal to the adaptation of my performance abilities and insubordination. Dear board and trustee members, during a meeting scheduled by A and B, Supervisor Davis, held on August 20th, 2020 at approximately 10:30 AM, I entered the boardroom to discuss legal matters regarding property law, in the direction of attorney Tim Golden, Supervisor Davis, trustee Art Paul, during a discussion of the legal matter, Supervisor Davis presented me with an employee warning form, listing offenses, a written warning, further complete work assignment, or work performance- I regret to complete work assignment, poor work performance, and insubordination. Upon reviewing the document, I immediately declared that this was full blank, 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 blank. After some events of Supervisor Stitty becoming extremely angry and intimidating as I refused to sign the document, as I do not agree with its contents and accusations. I was then offered by Supervisor Stitty that I did not, if I did not sign the employee warning, then I could go before the board either open or close session at the next board meeting today. I consulted Attorney Tim Golden on what my options were in regards to open or close session. And also requested that Supervisor Stitty perform a ride along with me to evaluate my work performance as the department head. I stated that I felt this was a respective issue between myself and the supervisor. I also felt that the ride along Supervisor Stitty and myself would, we could discuss and work out our disagreements. In further discussion between myself and Supervisor Stitty, our conversation escalated to hostility between the supervisor and the building official. Observing the heated discussion, Attorney Tim Golden recommended that Supervisor and myself take a break. At this point, I said, "Thank you, gentlemen," and left the boardroom. On Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020, at 1:30 PM, we completed a site visit to enforce a play order that's not appropriate within the township. Supervisor Stitty refused to run along, stating he had other meetings to attend and would just leave the location. There was no discussion regarding employee warning or any presented, nor any solution presented as the topic strictly the play issue. I requested a copy of the warning form on Friday, September 4th, to renew the accusations listed and to prepare my rebuttal to the board trustees. I would like to note for the record that I disagree with the information listed below and have to propose a slight rebuttal to address the three concerned areas. July 10th, 2020, due to the sensitive matter regarding the ongoing investigation with the Michigan State Police, I have not deliberately provided or discussed, as I was requested by Michigan State Trooper, not Supervisor Stitty. As this states on the supplemental list of performance issues, I was instructed by S N T Trooper to only observe, answer any questions, and follow the guidelines of the warrant. As a building official for over 20 years, I have accompanied many law enforcement agencies in a multiple investigation during my career. As a credible witness, I have not the liberty to discuss the investigation nor provide any correspondence to the township supervisor. However, the township supervisor has indicated a performance issue that affails to submit a report to him, the township attorney, or the M S B. This statement is incorrect. On July 2nd, 2020, I had emailed correspondence from the trooper handling the investigation, and they had everything in me and thanked me for my assistance. Therefore, I will not be submitting a report to the township supervisor or township attorney until directed by the Michigan State Police for the third confidentiality and sensitivity of the case. Following the recommendation of township supervisor, I have referenced the Charter of Township Alpina Policies and Procedures Manual and in the list, and the text on the back of the reports are all these documents. And in the list, chapter five, personnel policy article 5.11, non-retaliation. Township shall not tolerate retaliation against any employee or other person who in good faith reports a violation or perceived violation of the township policies or retaliation against any employee or other person participates in an investigation as a witness or otherwise. Retaliation is a serious violation of this policy and is subject to discipline and up to including discharge. An employee must promptly report any acts of retaliation to his department head or to the township supervisor as constantly exists. August 7th, 2020, on before dimensioned date, you placed a door, you placed a door that was formally removed by me during COVID-19 shutdown. The door in question was removed because said space is now the home of the township's primary copy machine, a location that you originally had picked for placement. Prior to rehanging the door, you never consulted me with about any issues that you had with removal since your return to work on May 7th. This statement is incorrect. I was contacted by DPW worker mid-April that he was instructed by the township clerk to remove the building's safety department store. This employee refused to remove the door for safety reasons. Upon my return to work on May 7th, 2020, I discovered the building safety department was missing. On Wednesday, September 2nd, the clerk requested to meet with me. During our discussion, I had an opportunity to ask why she removed the door from my office. The clerk replied that building safety department is now a common area for township employees. Chapter two, township board policy article 2.11, stewardship. The township board delegates the township officials and employees the responsibility to protect the township access through the means which include insurance, which includes land and buildings and property, as well protecting the image of positive public relations. Pursuant to Michigan Building Code 2015, Section 716, operating protections, Article 7165, required doors and shutters, required doors, shutters and shutters shall be installed according to provisions of the section and have been. Chapter five, personal policy, Article 5.1, employee supervision. The department head shall provide direction to employees in a manner that complies with the provisions of the township policy and procedures manual, employee handbook, as well as federal, state laws and township ordinances. I restored the back, the door back to its original state on Friday, August 14th, 2020, while I was leaving for vacation the next week. When I returned on August 24th, I discovered the door was removed again, hardware and brackets, placed into the supervisor's office, once again with no discussion to the department heads. It is my recommendation to the board trustees and the township, and the township building official, to remove the copy machine from the building safety office to the safe common area of the building and reinstall the office door to the file of Michigan Building Code. August 24th, I personally handed you a budget report for the department and asked that you make recommendations to make budget amendments for educational expenditure that you had placed on the agenda, agenda this evening. You did not make any suggestion for my considerations, and you also handed a partial request to BLT where you did not accommodate lodging and travel. This statement is incorrect. On August 12th, 2020, I presented to the clerk a request for a taxi Zinqua, the form was to be completed, emailed to contact Treetops Resort for the upcoming co-council of Congress of Michigan in September 2020. This was for a room reservation only, and no point did I request or instruct the clerk to place this on the board trustee agenda for the August 24th meeting. You remember, I was on vacation. Chapter two, township board policy, Article 2.17, regarding board meeting agenda. The township supervisor shall report the, prepare the agenda and board pack in at least three business days prior to every township board meeting. Businesses items intended for board action may be placed on the agenda by any board member by notifying the supervisor at least five days prior to the meeting. Agenda items shall nonetheless be accompanied by a copy of a motion or resolution that will place on the board along with the packed information, wanting to help board members understand the issue, hence the application that I give here. The department head in question had any business placed on the post agenda, so notify the supervisor, but then cover them and supporting documentation that will tie in business days prior to the township board. While returning from my vacation on August 24th, 2020, and reviewing the board trustee meeting, I discovered that my home address, Inspector Identification Number, entire application was placed on the township website. Please note, the clerk would never again was given a cover sheet that I had completed to assist her in submitting for room reservation, given us the DL number according to and help with completing the taxi Zinqua. I approached the clerk immediately and inquired to as my personal information was out on the township website. I demanded that it immediately be read back. Chapter four, policies procedures manual, financial administration policy, Article 4.63, public display. The township shall not place more than four sequence certificates of a social security number, identification cards, badges, time cards, employee rosters, board awards, permits, licenses, or any other materials or documents designed for public displays. Red flags rule policy, Article 4.73, definitions, identifying informations means any name or number that may be used alone or in conjunction with any other information to identify a specific person, including name, address, telephone number, social security number, date of birth, government issued driver's license, or identification number, alien registration number, government passport number, employee, text IP, identification number, unique electronic identification number, computers, internet control address, or routing number. To date, this information is still on the township website, but not redacted correctly. You clearly see my full name, address, phone number, employer, and identification number. I appreciate the board's consideration to remove the employee warning from my employee record based on what I outlined above. It is clear that I have not failed to complete work assignments, provided any type of poor work, work or performance, nor have been then insubordinate to my supervisor. Rather, I am asking the board of trustees to decide how this type of work requirement follows the guidelines as you have outlined in the township development policy procedures manual, which strictly governs all systems. The document and evidence, documents are attached to the back of everybody has the support device.
At this point, diamonds, are you finished?
Please. I just pray long and hard about this, Dave, and I'm really struggling with what I'm about to say, but I'm going to do it anyways. Seven years ago, April 2013, I was medically diagnosed with multiple sclerosis. A few people wonder why I hold my hands like this, because I have no feeling of pain all the time. I am pain 24/7. I'm declaring this at this time, so everyone's made aware of my condition. I have a hard time walking. I have spasticity. I'm in pain all the time, but I continue to perform to the best of my abilities. As long as God has given me the ability to walk on this earth, I will perform to the best of my abilities. You can see by the performance of the reports that my team has much improved over anything else over the past. So now I can come out, give up, but I have chosen at this time to let the public know that I'm not falling down for any other reason, it's a debilitating disease and there's no cure. If anybody's ever had something with multiple sclerosis, you can relate to it. I have personally observed over the period of the past nine months, the atmosphere in the township is despicable. The whispering, the gossiping, the slandering, and harassment is intolerable. I have provided documents of communication between the supervisor and myself. Draw your own conclusions as the one type of wire that is in the township. All employees at one time or another have been in this position. I am the final employee, whether I'm here tomorrow to serve the community or not, that is your decision. Based on my performance, make your decision. This information is just for educational purposes to read at your own leisure. This is what I've been putting out over the last year, threats, threats of being written up, not respect. Very frustrating. I have a very difficult time typing. My assistant was furloughed back in the COVID time and impeded my performance and ability to do my job. You will see in the reports with that in the direction of the supervisor that you not are all possession of, of the comments made to me. It is my observation that some of the leadership in this township needs training. I won't say who, you read, you decide. Once again, I'm requesting, it almost be espoused to my record, it's come to the public eye, to the media, to the press, to everybody who is now aware of what's been going on here. I have done nothing wrong. I have reports from people complimenting on how the performance that I do to help them in the system. I have complimentary reports from the treasurer at times. I have complimentary reports from the supervisor I've got. I feel that it's a severe injustice to slander my name in the board's face of this time. I have helped and worked and sat on every meeting up until January of this year with no data for two years because I believe in helping promote the township and help it grow. I can't get into everything on all this, but at least I will want to say thank you for the opportunity or send my case to the board, to the press, and to the public. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions or points of clarification for Mr. Melkensen?
I have an observation.
I would listen to observations.
It seems like we have a communication issue.
I agree.
And I don't think it's on one side. I think it's on all parties involved have ownership in the lack of communication. Because these are things that I've just heard about, that I was never told that that was a code violation. So why would I just find out that today?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and take my door off. I'll first have to respect to ask me.
I have a comment. It's not your door. It's the township's door.
It's not the township's door.
But I'm just saying, you know, it was decided that the copy machine would be moved in there. It was now a common area. It was a common area. The door was taken off.
It was not a common, it was the building safety department office.
Your office is on the other side of that copy machine.
It's part of my department.
But I didn't interrupt you. So I feel that the door, just to talk about a stupid thing about a door.
I totally agree. I've never seen this in my entire life.
But the door was taken off. If you consider that a code violation, that there's not a door on there, what about assessing that hasn't had a door?
That's why I was in trouble.
Okay, so.
Kirk, you said you wanted to know. Please give her the time.
So.
I apologize.
So you, you know, you have been here for what?
30 months.
Okay, so in that timeframe, if that has been an issue, not having a door on assessing, why haven't you brought that to our attention?
It happened to blast door in back that I had retrieved, the word going to hang onto the accessory room. It never got installed. It's in the back room.
But somebody has to do that, and I mean, I'm just, I am very frustrated. And for you to say that you come to meetings with no pay, your salary, just like the other ones of us, are salary. If you're a department head and you're salary, you do the work until it's done. And, you know, you talk about being disrespected or whispering. I mean, we also feel that same way. I mean, we can't even have a private conversation without everybody in here going ape whatever because we're having a conversation that we have to talk about as elected officials. We are the management. We have two department heads in the fire department and our water department. But we can't even have any conversation in this building and everybody's in an uproar. It's like, I just feel, and harassment, I'm not sure where that's all coming from. And, you know, everyone works for the township. I mean, Mr. Tillinger and.
Frank Rosensky.
They both, they work for the township. I mean, I'm just, I'm just very frustrated about this whole situation because I just feel like it could have been handled differently instead of, you know, we have done so much good at this township since I have been on this board, that it's like everything was just, everything was negative. I'm just very disappointed.
Who knew that? Yes, Michelle.
And the reason I wanted that door off is because I
And the reason I wanted that door off is because I come in here and work early mornings, weekends, and I would be extremely ticked if I come in here and that door's locked and I can't get near the copier, the scanner, that I use. So the solution was, take the door off, it can't get locked, we're all good.
Can I speak? The solution is just as you were the key, supervisor, Skibby has a key, I have a key, and my assistant has the key to the office. It is very simple just to get another key, supervisor has the authority to get another. It was presented a year ago by the treasurer that all the buildings need to be locked and secured, that door was not closed for quite a few years, and now it's locked. I have been charged on the state of Michigan as a required building official to enforce the building codes. That includes inside the building as well as out. I have the ability to enforce outside, but at the doors, it needs to be stopped. I'm recognized, the board had hired me back thirty months ago to enforce the codes, and I've sat and I've tried to figure out what is going on here. I did not create any hostilities, I will answer to any person, any question available. I have that ability, and I've done it to the best of my ability. This point should never happen, never happen. And I agree with communication, and the supervisor and myself, at one time, we had great communication, we have.
And to that, and to that point, Mr. Melkensson, that's where I will step up and still be very steadfast with the paper and the documentation that I brought forth. This wasn't an immediate, nor a threatening result of your own behavior. Communication, I would also echo that same sentiment of, yeah, there's ways to always But for a point of historical reference, this started, and probably to some extent, a downfall of communication between you and I, when for thirty days in a row, I asked for you to fill out a document that legal counsel had laid out a template for you to fill in about a, at that point in time, looking at a dangerous building issue. Thirty days in a row, to that thirtieth day is when I said, Kirk, sitting right in front of you at your desk, I need you to fill this out, because if you don't, you're going to force me to write you up for insubordination. Thirty days, I got it the same day. Didn't write you up. We had that verbal communication of, this is an unallowable position for any employee to take with their superior. The unfortunate reality is, as you mentioned in that meeting, since you want to provide us with three trees of documentation, you expressed several things that I found disturbing, of a hardship and displeasure with not only myself, but with the board, for not following through with ordinance 135. Let's, I sat at that table. Steve, I do believe that you were there. I took as much negativity, and what did we do? We took around and looked at it as a board, said, you know what, if this is the voice of the people, then we find a positive way to take lemons and make lemonade. And since then, I've let it go, I've moved on. I don't have the time to stick in and wallow in that disappointment. But I'm also learning facts today in your documentation that you could have easily clarified with communication yourself, as to the report in regards to your observations of that day's events, of which I asked you all the way up to the 28th, when we all sat down in a non-threatening manner, right at this very table. Did you verbalize it even at that point in time, that I've already submitted it to the state police and I will not provide you a copy? No, you did not. I provided you with every opportunity, in that setting, to take onus and ownership of your own behavior. We all have to take ownership of our own behavior, myself included. I cast no stones, I know I can improve, but we all stand in front of mirrors. And so you had that opportunity at that point to communicate that. You had both myself, trustee Polley, and attorney Golden present. And we're there to really help, you know, good, bad, or indifferent. If you didn't understand that we're there to help, when we, and I didn't refuse, I said, I do have a million things to do. So I met you at various sites to look at blight, because the unfortunate reality, year-to-date with that report, when I pull it out of BSNA, and it only shows three blight issues being addressed that are logged in the computer, that is also part of your job description, that unfortunately, because of that, if you want to call it lack of performance in that regard, in terms of, I've had to take point on again, that it should not be my job to do. That's why we have a building and code official. So all you had to really do, agree or disagree, was acknowledge. You chose not to, and I was not threatening when I said, you have an option. You have an option to go before the board, because if you don't want to sign this document and acknowledge what I perceive to be still valid reason for writing you up, then you have the option of an open or a closed session, as simple as that. You've provided us with enough paper to prove communications, and yeah, maybe where there's some areas that need improvement, I won't disagree with it. But if you didn't know, if you felt that you weren't in the wrong at any point in time, you wouldn't have pulled when we did those blight visits, an apology to me, and shaking my hand for your conduct and behavior on the 28th, which was very insubordinate, and you wouldn't have done the same to both counsel Golden and trustee Polley, an email. So you're taking ownership at that point, and now you don't want to take any ownership. Do you see the conundrum there? I want a positive way to move forward, as I've wanted since I decided to run nearly four years ago, how to make my hometown and this municipality the best it can be. Every employee is charged with that same mission, to make it the best it can be. I don't disagree, you have numbers. Wonderful. But we also have the other side of the numbers of the insubordination that you have presented. I've never once threatened you. I said, the only time I came close to saying, I will write you up, is because at what point in time, as supervisor, when I'm talking to an employee, department head nonetheless, thirty days in a row, asking for a simple document, at which point in time is that not insubordination? You showed that track record of a disgruntled employee, and I'm trying to communicate with you, you're telling me how terrible of a communicator and how much more education I need on how to be a leader. I'll always listen to anybody that can help me improve, but I won't listen to somebody that can't listen to their own recommendations. So how do we move forward, Mr. Melkensson? Of which I did, the other day, when we did the site...
We can work together.
And that's been my point.
We can work together.
That doesn't acknowledge this, erase, I want to work together. So, Steve?
I guess I just have one simple question. You've obviously put a lot of work into this, which is, you know where it looks, you know where it finds out. You know, I guess I don't understand why I'm the state police. If investigation was such that the officer said you are a material witness, and so no communication, why wouldn't you have just said, I'm sorry, the officer said I'm a material witness and I can't communicate? I don't understand why, that seems to me that would have completely shut the conversation down. At that particular point in time, a supervisor, Skibby, would have been able to believe what you were saying, or confirm what you were saying. If it confirmed that you're true, please stop. I don't understand why there would be a need to withhold that, so please, illuminate me.
It was not withheld, it was just, in my vast experience, anytime I assisted in any investigation or state operation, I did not talk about it to anyone.
Why wouldn't you say, I'm sorry, I can't talk about it?
Then I apologize because of the norm I've been used to over the years, confidentiality anytime in investigation.
I understand confidentiality.
They did come up during the presentation of the...
So I understand confidentiality, you have it in my daily life. And if somebody asks me a question, I will, I'm sorry, I can't talk about that, because of whatever, or I might just say, sorry, I can't talk about that. And so in the future, if there are situations where you feel that you are in a position where you shouldn't, or couldn't, or can't talk about it, say it, can't talk about it, for one reason or another, interpret it that. We don't have these unnecessary laws being constructed in the guise of some, I have special power, just say it, and just let it go, for what it's worth.
Cash, do you have a comment?
And I think regardless of that's an investigation or whatever, I think in the course of our duties, we have to document it so the township has a record, although I guess it may get better, I would say it's not foiled, right? Ken, if that's an active investigation?
Probably not, since it would be far, far so if we, if we investigate.
But we should still have some record for historical purposes, for your family, what you do at your family use, because in four years or whatever, most of us won't be here, but there needs to be a reference to go back to. We need to know what the township does, every department for that record, don't you think?
Yes, I was requested, I was requested by the MSP for information, and then was asked to accommodate, date them, accompany them during the investigation, and observe our own.
But I think what we're asking is some documentation on our end, so we know what's going on, because we're not the ones that are out there on that, and when it's all settled, or when it comes to be an issue, we're going to need to be informed to know what's going on. But if we don't ever make a record of it, how are we supposed to track it or document it, or know what's going on?
And to that end, I coordinated that with the MSP and you. I removed myself from that situation because of the hostility of those property owners and myself, because I thought it would behoove the process. Other individual that was at that point in time an employee of the township, the three of us had that conversation outside of the state police post of, please, just, all I want is, you know, I don't know what's going to happen, I just want your observations of the day. Boom, 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 I don't need, just something simple, that way our, because eventually, if this is a legal matter, the township attorney is the person of point. I received that document from that DPW worker inside forty-eight hours. He never said that the state police said you cannot submit any observations to your employer, who you're representing. So it's just, as I said, I didn't rush in any haste to write that document and have that conversation, Mr. Melkensson. I did not. I will not apologize for having to have quiet conversations with other elected officials, because this board is the management of this entire township. Not a department head, not an employee, this board assembled here today. You afforded me no other option outside of what I presented you, to offer you this, as is your right. You're not afforded any of the protections therein of the FOPLC contract, being a department head. Yes, you state some very good points, there was no retaliation as to the policy and procedure manual that brought us here to have this conversation. Trustee Polley, do you have anything to add of your observations?
I have one observation on your numbers here. You had 1,489 permits, but you only had building permits of 708, so you didn't...
Total accumulated, yes, sir.
Pardon me?
Total accumulated permits, yes, sir.
But you only had, you doing inspections of only 708, then is that correct? So the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing handled by separate people? Correct?
Yes, we had contracted, chemical, electrical, and plumbing inspected.
So they do the inspection?
Yes.
So you basically did the inspections on the building, which is 708?
Correct. Building owned.
So, yes, Michelle.
I just have to clarify something in my head. Are there two different reports we're talking about? One that you asked for for thirty days, and then one that would have gone to Michigan State?
Correct. So I will add that point of clarification.
Okay.
The first time, the reason that I brought that is because it shows a continuation of an insubordinate employee.
So I guess my question is, what prevented you from doing that report that you did after thirty days?
Which report were you referring to?
One by the name of Bear Point.
Bear Point Road, the Bear Point Road.
After, after the meeting that attorney Golden, yourself and I sat in and said, okay, this is our dangerous building ordinance, which of these articles within this ordinance do we need to highlight and strengthen by Michigan Building Code?
At this time, I would expect not to discuss that case.
I'm not discussing the case at all, I just wanted to know what prevented you from getting the report for thirty days?
I was still in working with the group, as far as my requirements had not been fulfilled.
I guess I don't understand now.
Nothing has changed, we're waiting for the response.
To the state police?
No, this is a different report, I'm not understanding.
And neither am I.
Different cases.
I think trustee Lathen said it very best, if you knew this about the case in which you're written up, and not just a historic reference point of a continuation of an insubordinate behavior, over, going on two months ago, you could have said simply, I was instructed by MSP not to provide you with anything, of which I could have contacted trooper Simpson and had that discussion, and it would have been a moot point. Instead, you don't, and I continuously ask, and I've never worked anywhere where I've had a boss that continuously asked me to provide any documentation, and whether or not I even verbally said no, or just completely ignored him, that there wasn't an aspect of a disciplinary action that followed suit. Henceforth, and as a Tom quote collected, I do disagree with your adjectives that you used, well-written in your document. There was no timeout, there was no hostility, it was the point of asking you point-blank questions, instead of getting point-blank answers, just going any other direction.
So, anyway, I don't know, did you, was the question answered?
I don't really feel like it was, I don't know why the first report took so long to get on Bear Point Road. Nathan said he had asked for it every day for thirty days, and I don't know what prevented you from doing that report.
That case has a long history, and both Nathan and the attorney are aware of it. I'm willing to accept.
Yeah.
So I wonder, I wonder if that's a legal requirement?
I think what Kurt's saying is, he's investigating various aspects regarding overall potential violations at that home, and I don't, I don't think he wants to get into detail.
I appreciate that, so I wonder, I just kind of wonder if maybe a better answer would be to maybe illuminate a little bit more by saying, this is an ongoing investigation, and I'd rather keep it low-key as I can on this thing, it's not involve too many other people, so that, so that these don't occur, or whatever might happen. So it seems to me that a simple understanding that I can't really default... So it seems to me that a simple understanding that I can't really default any of this information to because of, because of these kinds of missions. That to me would have probably said, okay, fair enough, thank you for your time. Instead, you'd have to ask me five times, and I had to have a lawyer to interpret what essentially you said. It seems to me that it would have been a lot easier to just sit about the whole thing and just say.
Back in February this year, a meeting was held between supervisors Skibby, county attorney, and myself, which I'm not at liberty to discuss, and that's why I'm going to leave it.
And we're not asking you to discuss anything.
No. The lady's friends must have been involved in the meeting. In any event, I think, hopefully, you're understanding what I'm saying.
Yes.
It is a, it is a, if I don't have a clue what you're talking about, if you've got a hundred percent analogy of what I'm talking about, you got to at least give me a little bit, so that I can at least rationalize it in my head, that I don't have to ask that question anymore, until something, my only point.
The term communications come up a few times here, and the key here is, you reported to Nathan and Michelle and Laura, just keep them apprised. And when you've got questions, you ask them, they've got questions, they're going to ask you, rather than get it done, where it comes to this point, that any uncertainty, it may be a weekly thing, or however, but, but answer, you know, keep it in the box.
I suppose, I'm sorry, I suppose from the standpoint of the people that are here most, that they could probably also say, is this an ongoing investigation that you can't discuss? And to sort of prompt the kind of decision, instead of like, attempt sort of this.
Cash, trustee Polley.
If this was, you can't talk about it, whatever, this is our legal person, Mr. Golden. If you can't talk to him, he represents this whole township. Who in the devil can we talk to? I mean, he's, he's, he's got the legal part that he can keep his, he can say nothing. But you wouldn't even talk to him?
I haven't.
Pardon me?
I haven't, during our.
Because if you gave him the information he was looking for.
He presented to your request, the last department head meeting we had together as a group was in January of this year.
So.
That's where we communicated last time.
Yes, and we can, we can probably go round and round. At this point in time, we have, yes, and you know what? We have, and, and there's always room for even a greater. But that goes into the point of, this was not a snap decision by myself to get to this point.
No, I can appreciate.
Yes, by all means.
Going into the draw, a chain of command, you know, as a county attorney, everything goes through the supervisor. He ultimately is the one that supervises everybody that's here. So if you have an issue or whatever, there is avenues, if you have an issue with the supervisor, to go to the personnel committee, whatever. There are other avenues if that's a conflict, but everything must run through him, and then eventually to the board. But there has to be one person that answers all this stuff, because we're not here every year. So regardless of whatever it is, if there is issues inside the building, you got to let us know. Don't ambush us at a meeting with stuff like this, that, you know, you've been here for thirty months, and you just bring it to our township. That's not fair to us. And if we made mistakes, then we'll correct them. Because you've got some valid points there. I'm not saying you don't, but if we're doing something wrong, and nobody knows that, it'd be nice if you knew that, let us know. We'll fix that. I'm all for that, but it should have never got to this point where I fight over a door. And if he requests something, okay, then get it done.
It appears that this all accelerated in a month of a situation.
I'd like to just make a comment, that, I mean, anytime you, Dave, I mean, any employee wants to meet with us, I mean, we may not have regularly scheduled department head meetings, but you can always say, hey, can we have a quick meeting? We called Dave, we, you know, sit down and do a quick, if there's something to talk about. I mean, we're always open to that.
So at this point in time, we have a written warning that I presented to Mr. Malcomson on the twenty-eighth of August, of which he did not sign. We have Mr. Malcomson's rebuttal. I'll leave it to this board to either listen to the rebuttal or move forward and file.
Both, everything presented is going to be part of it.
Yeah, everything's going to be part of it, yeah.
I don't even know if the motion is necessary. You put it both reported to the board.
Okay.
The only circumstances, historical occurrences, and if the board wanted to take some action to go with it, it's not necessary.
Okay, copy that. Mr. Polley.
I have one question. If all this documentation, and some of it is, Cash had mentioned, is probably very valid and whatever, but over this period of time, all these things have been going on, nothing has been said, why would you want to work in a place like this?
When I was interviewed here, I interviewed to the board at that time, everybody asked the same question, why? I and my spouse, email in, retired, and slowed down. That was the reason. During the tenure, observations have been made. Has it been pleasant? No. But I refrain from interacting with gossip or anything else, just to sort of come to this point. And I normally don't talk about much, and everybody knows that. I don't discuss issues with anybody. It got to this end.
Any other comments? Or can we conclude this business?
So the receipt, file, this?
Ken.
Put in the appropriate.
I'll entertain a motion to receive and file all the documents therein.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by trustee Dunkel. Do we have support?
Who supported it?
Steve. Any further discussion? All those, well, let's do a roll call, since we took the time to address a personnel issue.
So it's to receive and file the documentation from the.
Yep.
So. Sir Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Thank you very much for your time. Let's.
Well done, boys. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this point in time, Dave, the next item of business is eight hundred radios, of which I'd entertain a motion to table to the subsequent meeting, and you and I will get together this afternoon to discuss the radios, or the pagers, and other matters.
Is that what that's.
We have a motion to table the eight hundred megahertz pagers.
I thought we already talked, yeah.
We did, but we needed, we didn't address it on the correction of the agenda. So we have a motion on the table. Do we have support to table?
Support.
Support. Any further discussion?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Dunkel, sorry.
We're going to have to come back to appropriate line items.
Correct.
And who's supported it?
Laura. Any further discussion? Yes, we will come back after, obviously, this being very short notice, for our, we'll still have adequate time if we have it at our next regularly-held meeting. So, all those in favor of tabling this matter signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dunkel?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Item fourteen, the pagers will be tabled and brought back to the subsequent meeting. Thank you very much for your time, chief. At this point in time, I would entertain a motion to go, oh, let me grab it. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss confidential legal opinion between the board for basis of discussion. Oops, sorry.
No, that's good.
Sorry. No, this is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was saying it right.
Okay.
Going to closed session based upon confidential written legal opinion for the use of the township board. It may be, it's a discussion in closed session pursuant to Michigan law. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll move. Support.
We got, we got support.
Is that Steve?
Dunkel.
I kept sitting there, who in the hell is?
Did I make the motion?
Yes. Any, and I'll, I'll afford you a minute when we get closed. Any further discussion? If not, a roll call, both to go into closed session.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Sir Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. We are in closed.
At twelve forty-one.
Yes.